I'd like to call the October 22, 2013 City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco Ochikas?
Here.
House?
Here.
Mario?
Here.
Rouse?
White?
Mayor Schneider?
Here.
Proclamation declaring October 20th to 25th as National Friends of the Libraries Week. Come on up. Here we go. "The work of the Friends of the Santa Barbara Republic Library highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is a cornerstone of the community providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. And the Friends raise money that helps to take our library from very good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for our children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And the Friends of the Santa Barbara Republic Library understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to people of all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all on how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim October 20 to 26, 2013, as National Friends of the Library Week in Santa Barbara and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Santa Barbara Republic Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, pretty much everything I was going to say about what we do is in this proclamation, so that's going to cut way down. As you know, our focus is primarily on the children's programs. And I would like to thank the City Council for continuing to support the library. And we're looking forward to your continued support as we attempt to raise funds, or it's not an attempt, as we do raise funds, to remodel the children's library and have Santa Barbara just be the most blessed place in the world for kids to learn and grow and all the rest of us, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Councilmember Mario has the button. I'll just read out, says librarian, the original search engine. I like that. That's great. Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, public comment. I have quite a few speaker slips here. We'll start with Stephen Sharp. Come on up to the podium.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Stephen Sharp and I am the general director of Opera Santa Barbara. And you may not know that this year Opera Santa Barbara is celebrating our 20th anniversary season. And we're actually launching our season on November 8th and 10th with Puccini's masterpiece, Tosca, which promises to- Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, I was really just going to ask you to join us for Puccini's Tosca. I don't know what happened, but-
Well, they actually did fill out speaker slips for this, so we do have Jessica Julian on soprano and Robert Watson on tenor and Natasha Kizlenko on the pianist. So thank you all for being here today. There we go. They stayed with-
Madam Mayor, just out of curiosity, what is the formal time limit on public arias?
Ask Bogner. I don't know. That's a big one. We'll get on that, whatever you said, yeah. Sheri Fisher, you're next, be followed by Steve Reynolds.
Oh, wow. Would you like me to sing? No, no, you don't want me to. Good afternoon. I was here a few months ago to talk about some difficulties MTD was having. I'm here today to thank you. Dear Mayor Schneider and councilmembers, MTD is very grateful for your assistance during this summer and fall while we met with the community to explain delays and potential loss of, total loss of service of, excuse me, of federal funding for transit. Legislation recently signed by the governor will allow the Federal Department of Labor to resume the flow of transit funding money, federal money, did I say funny? Federal money, and transit agents to, MTD and transit agencies across the state of California. Your letters and calls were of great assistance, and I'm speaking to you sitting here and the general community. Together, we all inform the legislature, the governors, and the Department of Labor of the need to work together and to resolve this issue. Due to the recently passed legislation, legislative relief even, MTD will not find it necessary to reduce service. We're aware that our community-wide discussions regarding a potential 30% loss of service were difficult for you as an agency and difficult for the community at large. It was stressful for us also. But nevertheless, we felt a requirement to communicate the financial difficulties that transit was facing, not only to you but to the community, and that included a conversation with all our community partners. On behalf of MTD's board, MTD's staff, and the community that uses transit service, we want to thank you again. We're pleased with the way things are turning out, and we appreciate your support ongoing. Thanks.
Thank you. Steve Reynolds will be followed by Nancy Tunnel.
Good afternoon, Council. Last week I was here, we banned the plastic bags due to the large waste and overfill of our landfills. And I'd like to bring to your attention the following independent magazine. I was recently acquired a small piece of property. I was cleaning out some stuff out of this old lot, and I found it independent from about 12 years ago. And it was actually much smaller and much less advertising. So I just thought that was a pretty big ironic deal that, you know, we were discussing landfills and waste, and yet we have an extreme amount of advertising and useless 3D glasses. Anyway, thank you. Also here, I'm basically here today because I got another ticket. And if you remember a month back, I told you guys at the police department, after I told you I was running as a mayor, writing candidate, that the police department told me they no longer wanted me here. Well, they've changed their tune, and now they just claim that I don't even exist. They don't know my name. And so I brought that to the sergeant's attention. I still haven't got any of my harassment claims procedures fulfilled by the chief. Basically don't know what to do from this point except for go to the county and ask the DA, you know, is she ever going to get on board with the chief and take this to court? Or is this just going to be another endless use of paper? Thank you very much.
Nancy Tunnel will be followed by Steve Price.
What we see happening in Washington, DC is the intentional undermining of the United States government. Nation states must be rendered unworkable. Relatively content people in first-world countries must be threatened with instability and crisis to win their acceptance for a new world order. And you assist by laying the groundwork at the local level by implementing Agenda 21, especially through your partnership with ICLI. This is a system with absolute untouchable authority at the global level and semi-autonomy at the local and regional levels, but autonomy within United Nations guidelines and those laws, rules, regulations set down by chosen administrators. Although Agenda 21 is exhaustingly intentionally vague, one thing that is very clear is the handing over of power to NGOs, businesses, and groups with established expertise in a given field. Three of the NGOs working with the United Nations are World Wildlife Fund, Nature Conservancy, Conservation International, and these sound so evergreen until you look at the CEOs and the boards of directors, and there you've got Goldman Sachs, Walmart, Bank of America, Unilever, BP, Duke Energy, Google, Hewlett Packard, Coca-Cola, on and on, as well as Forest Real Estate Infrastructure Carbon Market and Development Interest. In other words, people positioned to control all natural resources where and how we will live in every aspect of our lives. For example, World Wildlife Fund and Coca-Cola are going around the world buying up and controlling water resources. Not surprisingly, World Wildlife Fund's chairman is Neville Isdale, who spent 30 years with Coke. And these huge corporations masked by their green NGOs are writing the rules and regulations that determine sustainable practice for their own industries and for us. You are participating in the construction of a mercantile corporatocracy that will drive people off their lands and into densely packed cities. And I found it almost laughable that you still recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Steve Price will be followed by Ethan Schenkman. Mr. Price here? Okay. Mr. Schenkman, and then Cruzito Herrera Cruz.
I've come to bring attention to three gifts: Stockton, San Bernardino, Mountain Lakes. And I have two more jokers in California State History, Vallejo and Orange. Does that ring a bell? What is God telling us? If you want relief, spell that S-H-E-N-K-M-A-N for mayor. Thank you.
Cruzito Herrera Cruz, and then Jenny Castro.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for everyone present. My name is Cruzito Herrera Cruz. I am number six in the vote ballot election. Please vote for me. Voten por Cruzito Herrera Cruz. I just would like to have this public opportunity to say muchas gracias, thank you very much to the nomination petition signers that signed in year seven, that signed in year nine, that signed in year 11, and that signed in year 13. Thank you to the nomination petition signers that might be listening out there that has allowed me to participate in this electoral election within our municipality of the city of Santa Barbara. I've learned a lot. I've gained a lot of insight, and I've been prepared to intelligently and to humbly represent our community in a very good perspective of how we use our words. In that sense, I've also learned negativity about being censored, about not being a viable candidate, about being censored from political public forums, which sends a bad precedent. I would like to acknowledge the Greater Lodging of Santa Barbara Association, the Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce, the Santa Barbara Coalition of Responsible Government, and even Milpa's Community Association for excluding me intentionally from not participating in this political forum. It's a bad electoral precedent when grassroots candidates attempt to participate and they're excluded, not because of money but because of intelligence. So con eso les digo a los votantes que hay personas en Santa Barbara que corren su política chueca, mentirosa. Entonces vamos a tratar de cambiar esto una forma humildemente para participar en la política, en las elecciones. Tenemos que votar, tenemos que registrarnos, tenemos que involucrarnos en el gobierno. We have to participate and engage and mobilize. Voten, registrense. Si se puede.
Jenny Castro will be followed by Melissa Wilkins.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Jenny Castro, and I'm a senior at La Cuesta High School. I was in Club Live for two years, and this is my fourth year being a part of Friday Night Live. The Friday Night Live Leadership Coalition is a group of teens who come together from Santa Barbara High School, La Cuesta High School, San Marcos High School, and Dos Pueblos to reduce underage drinking and use in our community and our schools. One of the things that I like best about Friday Night Live is all the community outreach we do and all the opportunities offered to us outside of Friday Night Live. One of the campaigns that we plan every year is to raise awareness about the dangers of drugs and alcohol in our Red Ribbon Week campaign. We are proud to announce that members of Friday Night Live and Club Live at the junior high schools have partnered with their youth service specialists and KATA staff to plan awareness campaigns at each of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Junior High and High Schools. Red Ribbon Week is being celebrated this week. Typically, we have over 3,000 students pledged to be drug and alcohol-free during Red Ribbon Week. Those who pledge wear a red wristband as a promise, a promise to maintain our own commitment to the health and safety of ourselves, our families, and our young people. We wear a wristband to focus our attention on a common cause, the fight against tobacco, alcohol, and other drug abuse. This week, we also have students leading classroom presentations, and we will reach hundreds of students with information regarding the benefits of choosing to be alcohol and drug-free. We also have fun activities planned during lunchtime to bring students together and promote being sober. We are here to ask you to join us by pledging and wearing a wristband to show your support of the young people in Santa Barbara who are living a drug and alcohol-free lifestyle. Thank you.
Melissa Wilkins will be followed by Judith Smith, and David Diaz, Matthew Kramer, and Robert Johns will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name's Melissa Wilkins. I'm the Prevention Coordinator at the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, and I just am here to echo Jenny's comments and to say thank you again for your support of all of our prevention, intervention, and treatment programs that we run every year. As you may know, our flags are flying on State Street in symbolism of our Red Ribbon Week campaign. The week was kicked off with our poster reception, which we thank you, Madam Mayor, for being present there on Saturday. And as Jenny mentioned, we have a lot of different activities going on, so we welcome you to check those out on the school campuses. And the week will be bookended by our Summit for Danny fundraising hike, which is to support our Daniel Bryant Youth and Family Treatment Center. So we just want to thank you again for the ongoing support and for making these programs possible in the city of Santa Barbara and our Santa Barbara Unified School District schools. Thank you.
Judith Smith?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Judith Smith, speaking as an individual person. I'm here today to present a petition advocating off-leash hours for large, for dogs in Sheffield Park and Schofield Park. And I would suggest you that we need this because the people who really use that park for between 7:30 and 9:30 in the morning are the hours that I'm asking for, are the people who do walk their dogs. And most of those dogs are big dogs, and they need longer runs than a leash will provide. I also would say that off-leash dogs are less defensive, and I have not seen any fighting or any adverse actions of dogs environmentally. Most of us pick up anyway, and so I don't think there'd be any change there. So it will be my pleasure to present a petition of, signed by the neighbors, the neighbor, the people who use that park and who live really in the neighborhood. And so I'll give that to the clerk if that's fine.
I can give it right here to the clerk.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Diaz?
Good day, Councilwoman Mayor and Santa Barbara. First, I'm going to start off this yellow disabled card for MTD does not have any identifying marks as mobility or DP. I was in Ventura in San Luis Obispo having to take off my shoes to demonstrate to the drivers because they wouldn't accept the fact that I had my disabled placard that I was disabled. The placards are mandated to be honored wherever you go under federal mandate, but it's difficult with the new cards because there's nothing identifying me as a person with mobility challenges. So I wish Sheri was here to hear that. She and I, we had a meeting last week, and I brought to her attention, they're going to be putting miniature refrigerator boxes for GPS and cameras on the bus taking up the cargo bays. I brought to Sheri's attention during the meeting we had last week about the fact that Vista Bus has the GPS and a camera, and there's no big box taking up the cargo bays. We also discussed the issue with the dogs. Everyone who has a dog now are their service dogs. And last week, there was a gentleman and a woman. The woman took up three seats, had a bed for her dog, and in the cargo bay, she had a blanket there in case the dog wanted to go to another level. I think this dog thing sort of needs to be dealt with because it's taking up space, and a lot of people are getting upset because they don't want to smell like dogs when they go home. So there's many other issues that were discussed, and I'll be bringing them to your attention in the future. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Matthew Kramer?
Madam Mayor, fellow City Councilmembers.
So we're having a debate tonight.
Mr. Kramer, if you could address us, please.
I am.
No, by facing us, Mr. Kramer, if you could.
It's about making the city government better.
Mr. Kramer, you need to face us for public comment. Mr. Kramer, I'm going to turn off the mic if you don't face us.
Thank you very much.
Robert Johns will be the final speaker.
We don't really need a gang injunction. We don't really need one, and I'll tell you why. Those 30 men, and this gang injunction should not be for children or adolescents, but those 30 men will have a parole probation. The same, the same aspects, dimensions of a gang injunction will take place in their parole and probation. Now, I don't quite understand why we have this gang injunction. In other words, top cop and you, councilpersons, and the DA want a gang injunction. I believe that if you continue to force with this gang injunction, what you're really saying is that your criminal justice system is defunct. That's what you're really saying, and that you really can't, especially top cop, cannot take care of the kids that they're supposed to. You see, top cop has nothing to do but go around and harass young kids going to Santa Barbara High School and City College. I mean, this is a, it's a travesty. And so the community, and I don't mean just the Latino community, the whole community is upset by this gang injunction attempt. And if it does come down, then there will be, there will be a repeal. It cannot possibly, there's so many legalities here that are illegal, and I'm a psychologist, not an attorney. Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. There's some items to read.
Item number six, introduction of ordinance for 2013 Fire Code adoption, recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of the title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara repealing Santa Barbara Municipal Code Chapter 8.04 and adopting a new Chapter 8.04, adopting by reference the 2013 edition of the California Fire Code as published by the California Building Standards Commission, including Appendix Chapter 4 and Appendices B, BB, C, CC, and H of that code with local amendments. Item number seven, local amendments to California Building Code- Item number seven, local amendments to California Building Codes. Recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Santa Barbara Municipal Code Chapter 22.04, adopting by reference the California State Building Codes and other related codes, adopting local revisions to those codes, and repealing ordinance number 5536.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Is there any item someone needs to take off the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve it? Okay, moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today and heard a report on the final year-end results for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013. And I would recommend that we skip, in our full council hearing of this report, that we skip the detailed discussion of the recommendations, which we found unobjectionable.
And I guess if we have questions, we can ask them. We'll get to that after item 11, if you could read that.
State Water Project Contract Extension.
Thank you. Ms. Bjork. First off, thank you and congrats for being interim director. And is this your last meeting, Ms. Anderson, in the back? You'll be here next week. Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am Rebecca Bjork, Water Resources Manager, and I have with me today Ray Stokes, who is the Executive Director for the CCWA. I also have Kelly Dyer, who's our Water Supply Analyst, available to answer technical questions. The purpose of my presentation today is to, is threefold. One, to talk a little bit about the State Water Project, what it is and the role it plays for delivering water to Santa Barbara. Secondly, to talk more specifically about our water supply and the role of state water in that water supply. And thirdly, to talk about the contract extension issues that are currently being discussed at the state between the state water contractors and the Department of Water Resources. You can't talk about state water right now without also speaking about the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, so I will be touching on that briefly as well. We haven't talked much about state water specifically. We've had recent discussions with council about water supply planning in general, and in 2011 did update our long-term water supply plan. But I did want to take this chance to talk a little bit about the State Water Project, its role, and how it plays into our overall supplies. The State Water Project was constructed in the 1960s, and the coastal branch that serves Santa Barbara was constructed from '93 to '97, being completed in 1997. The State Water Project serves 29 contractors, typically counties. It provides water to 25 million people. Two out of three people in the state receive some of their water supply from the State Water Project. Additionally, it provides water for irrigation of 750,000 acres of farmland, which is an area about the size of Rhode Island. The primary storage reservoir and source of water for the State Water Project is Lake Oroville, north of Sacramento, on the Feather River. The most notable feature of the State Water Project is its aqueduct, 444 miles of aqueduct. But the project actually consists of over 700 miles of pipes, canals, and aqueducts, and numerous pump station reservoirs. It's a huge project. This schematic I chose because it talks a little bit about how the State Water Project functions both in its canals and aqueduct and in its in-stream flows. The light blue shows in-stream flow of water into the delta. The dark blue is the aqueduct taking water out, and the dotted area is the delta itself. And you can see that within the delta, we are dependent on in-stream flows for conveyance of state water. And that's one of the issues that we're addressing right now in terms of reliability and impacts. The coastal branch extension, which serves Santa Barbara counties, was approved in 1991 when voters approved the bond funding to pay for the coastal branch. It was constructed in, between '93 and '97, and it's a joint project between the Department of Water Resources and the Central Coast Water Authority. The capital cost for the Department of Water Resources was about $480 million, and CCWA's facilities are $115 million. They, you can see that the Department of Water Resources was responsible for 100.6 miles of pipeline, couple of pump stations and reservoirs. CCWA portion constructed a 50 million gallon a day water treatment plant, pump stations, reservoirs, and 42 and a half miles of pipelines. So substantial facilities to serve the San Luis and Santa Barbara County areas. So that's a little bit, a brief overview, very brief overview of the State Water Project. I wanted to talk about specifically how the supply plays into Santa Barbara water supplies. Santa Barbara receives most of its water from surface water, both through Gibraltar and Kachuma. We have state water, groundwater, recycled water, desalination. And I think it's really important, although conservation is not a supply, it has been responsible for reducing our demand and thereby offsetting the demands of these supplies by over 2,000 acre feet a year. So substantial amount, and we need to remember that whenever we're talking about water supplies, conservation is a part of it. So we have a diverse supply. You've seen this chart numerous times. We talk about it every year when we're doing water supply planning, but I want to run through it a little bit with regard to the role that state water plays in there. Just as a reminder, anytime the Kachuma stops spilling, we make the assumption that we're going into a multi-year dry period. At this point in time, we are right here in year three. October 1 starts our new water year. So what you're looking at here is actual information about water supply and water supply use for years one, two, real information about reliable, dependable water supplies for year three. We can count on the supplies that are here. We have them in reservoirs or in other places that we know that we can rely on. Year four, five, and six remain plans, and they are dependent on a number of assumptions, including assumptions about rainfall and how much precipitation we'll get. But we believe that they are reasonable plans, but I do want to say that they are still in planning. The dark blue is Kachuma. Light blue is carryover water. So to the extent that we are able to use less than our allotment in Kachuma, we can carry that forward each year. Then the very light blue or gray color is Gibraltar water. And green is state water. Yellow is the groundwater supplies. So you can see last year, we used no state water. That was intentional. We were able to carry that state water over in other reservoirs and in groundwater banks elsewhere in the state to allow us to save it in case this year was dry. And in this year, you can see that we are planning on using a substantial amount of state water as we are in the future years. Another important part of the State Water Project is it allows us to get water here from other areas that may not, that may be purchased on the market from state water purveyors or that we have actually put into groundwater banks elsewhere in the state. And we currently have water banked elsewhere in the state in the groundwater that we are able to take advantage of because of our connectivity to the State Water Project and the ability to get that water here. So in year five, we would be expecting to have some of that banked groundwater delivered to us. You will see that the purple, this is recycled water, is not present currently. We're undergoing a significant project to rehabilitate and replace our recycled water plant, and we are expecting to have that producing water again and more reliably in year five. So this is what our picture would look like if we did not have state water. Again, these are real unreliable supplies, and you can see that this year, we would be pulling much more heavily on our groundwater banks. We try to avoid doing that any sooner than we have to because we can draw down the levels in the banks, allowing saltwater to intrude into our groundwater and then potentially making it unusable. And then you can see that importantly, in year four, the red indicates the gap between what council has adopted as an acceptable shortage in supply, the kinds of shortage we could expect our customers to achieve through extraordinary conservation measures, really, really careful use of water, the kind of thing that we saw in the early 1990s, and what we'd actually be able to supply. And you can see that by year six, we would be having an overall shortage of about 35%. And realistically, given the amount of conservation and the amount of demand reduction that we've already seen by our customers, it's not, it's certainly far from guaranteed that we'd be able to achieve that kind of reduction in demand. So we'd really be looking at a situation where we needed something to bridge the gap. This is a complicated chart because water supply planning is complicated. We've been through it several times, but for people who aren't familiar with it, I'm going to just walk through it again. What it is, is a stacked bar of how we use our supplies to meet demand. And this line up here is our projected demand that we need to meet. So we plan our different supplies to meet that demand on an ongoing basis. The period on the bottom of the chart is 1918 to 1993. Because we don't have the benefit of future knowledge, we have to rely on historical performance of our groundwater supplies as our best predictor of what will happen in the future. We realize that's not perfect, but it's the best information we have where we can say if it rains this much, this is how we would expect these different supplies to perform. So that's the basis of the planning. The red line is the amount of water that we have in our storage basins, our groundwater storage basins. And again, we try to manage that to keep those full and draw down just the amount of water that we could expect to be replenished the next year, except in periods of extended dry weather, when we would rely more heavily on that stored groundwater. So the goal is to have these red dips recover and come back up so that the next time we need to rely on that groundwater, the water is there and available. So this is our long-term planning model, and you can see that it includes planning for a period where we'd have reduced demands. And we would also be having this orange, which is either, it's drought supplies, and in this role, it means either desal or water that we're able to acquire elsewhere in the state. So through the connectivity of the State Water Project. This is what that same long-term supply planning looks like without state water in the matrix, just taking out state water. And you can see that we are not able to sustainably maintain our groundwater basins, nor are we able to meet necessary demand requirements. So that's obviously not something that we would be able to do. We would need another supply. The only other supply that we have available to us locally is desal. And so fortunately, for planning purposes, our permitted desal plant actually has enough capacity that we would be able, given the current assumptions and the planning scenarios of this graph, to meet future demands. But I will talk a little bit more about what that would look like in terms of costs a little later in this presentation. I just wanted to show you that the role that state water plays for us is really allowing us to defer, hopefully indefinitely, the use of desal as a drought supply. So that's the role of supply in our, in our local water supplies. The real reason for coming to you at this point in time to update you on state water is because there are ongoing conversations with the state water contractors and the Department of Water Resources about extending the contract between the state water contractors and Department of Water Resources for state water. The contract with DWR is actually between the Santa Barbara County and the Department of Water Resources. Most of the rights and responsibilities that contract have been assigned to CCWA, but the county still is the signer of the contract. And Tom Farim with the County Flood Control and Water Agency is here today as well. That contract expires 2035, and so there's some question about, well, why would we need to be extending it now? And I'm going to talk about that. I want to say that the city's contract is with CCWA, and the terms of that contract provide that if the county contract is extended, our contract also extends. So we're linked into this whole contract extension through the terms of our contract with CCWA. The contract extension issue is really, the biggest one is the term, and it has to do with the way that DWR finances the capital improvement needed to maintain and operate the state water project. And so the current term that's being talked about is extending the contract by 40 to 75 years. The state is saying 40. Contractors are saying they'd like 75. They'd like more reliability. And the big driver there is how the financing for capital projects is done. The state, on average, sells about $200 million in bonds annually to fund the capital work on the state water project. Those are typically 30-year bonds, but they have to be repaid within the term of the contract. So we're now 22 years out, and as we get closer and closer, the repayment for that capital expense will get shorter and shorter, and so condensing the amount of time that we would have to repay those capital expenditures. The other things that the contractors are looking for, and Mr. Stokes can speak to these much better than I, but it's better financial management by the Department of Water Resources, some clarification of the funding requirements. So some of the project costs are not the responsibility of state water contractors. They are actually in support of recreation or other things that are paid elsewhere, and it's always a little fuzzy about how those costs will be met. And then also simplification of billing, so it is more clear and transparent how the costs are being spent and how water payers' money is being used. This is an example payment schedule. It's just what would happen to our annual incremental costs, all state water costs, if we were looking at a 2035 expenditure deadline. And you can see as we get further and further out in the time period, the annual incremental costs, so additional costs each year, escalates very significantly. If the contract is extended and you're able to continue to have long-term bonds, the incremental costs will remain flat. So we would see about the same level of incremental cost each year. And this is really the basis of the need for contract extension. And I'm going to talk about the Bay Delta Conservation Plan in the next part of this presentation, but I want to make very clear, this is without BDCP, Bay Delta Conservation Plan. This is the current state of affairs and the current driver for contract extension. So the next steps in contract extension, the contractors have been meeting with the state.
Question, actually, Mr. Hutchison.
If I might, the savings you, in the last slide that you had up there, are because we can seal in existing rates now for an extended period?
This, it's more how the future costs are financed. So these are, it's not really savings in that you would be financing the costs over a longer period of time, but the projects that are funded by these, by the kinds of bonds are sold by Department of Water Resources are things like stabilizing the San Luis Reservoir Dam for earthquake safety, replacing pump stations. There was a big fire at one of the pump stations that's going to cost millions of dollars to repair. So projects that we would typically finance over a period of time because they have a long lifespan would suddenly have to be cash-funded and paid for all in one year. So it's not so much the cost escalates as that it is condensed, and we'd have to pay a lot of money in one year for a project that would potentially have another 40, 50-year lifespan.
So this gives us the opportunity to expand that lifespan?
The contract extension would allow the state to issue bonds with lives that extend beyond 2035. Right now, they're restricted in not being able to extend beyond the length of the contract. So that's really.
We're helping them with a financing mechanism.
We pay, the state water contractors pay for state water costs. So under, by contract, we already are responsible for that. So we are helping ourselves by allowing ourselves a longer period of time to pay back the expenditures.
And are there others that face the same decision?
All of the state water contractors are in the same situation, and that's why all of the 29 contractors are currently having discussions with the Department of Water Resources about this issue.
By this presentation, it would be silly not to do what you're suggesting, but are there other entities that might not go along with this, as far as you know?
I would need to defer that question to Mr. Stokes, who's been very closely, he's one of nine lead people doing the contract negotiation, and he can talk about that. If it's all right, I'd like to get through the rest of this.
I don't want to do too early an interruption.
And then put the questions, if you can ask Mr. Stokes those questions, I think that would be.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. So the next steps are for the contractors and the state to come up with agreements in principle, complete the environmental review that's required, and then have the contract approved by all of the necessary bodies, the state water contractors and the state. So then, because as I said, there's a lot of conversation about the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, and the timing of this contract extension issue seems to create an excess between it and the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. In actuality, it's likely that if that project goes forward, it will go forward before 2035, so those costs would fall under this contract anyway, would not require extension. But I want you to understand what the project is, and then we can talk about implications. The Bay Delta Conservation Plan is a plan to address issues in the delta and equally address two goals. One is restoring water supply reliability, and the other is preserving and enhancing environment for fish, wildlife, and people. So those are the goals of the plan. This does a very nice job of sort of illustrating one of the main problems. You've got the, this is the water flow. Here's Sacramento, and this is the delta area, water coming down from Oroville in the Feather River, and water coming in through the San Joaquin River and other rivers into the delta. The very powerful pumps at the Banks Pumping Plant that are able to actually pull water through the delta, and in some cases, reverse the flow of the San Joaquin, of Sacramento River, pulling water back up, pulling species in with it, and also changing the place where the, changing where the salinity grade between tidal and freshwater occurs. So you can see, this is, anytime that you have this kind of change in the way that water flows through a habitat, particularly such a sensitive habitat as the delta, you're going to have environmental impacts. And that is one of the, sort of the crux. And that is one of the, sort of the crux of the problem in the state water project. Interestingly, in preparing for this project, I went back and was looking at some history. They started talking about the state water project in the late 1890s. Wasn't actually constructed until 1950s due to a number of things, including the Great Depression and World War II. But right from the very beginning, they had contemplated conveyance of some way through the delta, not using through delta flows. When it got to the 1950s, that one element, well, a number of elements were removed for cost savings, including the through delta conveyance. So we're still facing the issues created by that. The proposal of the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, or BDCP, is two parts. It is the establishment of 145,000 acres of habitat protection and restoration, and the construction of two 40-foot-wide diameter, 30-mile-long tunnels that could convey 9,000 cubic feet per second of water beneath, 150 feet beneath the delta, eliminating this through delta flow. So taking away this issue of reversing flows. The goal of the BDCP is to get long-term, comprehensive habitat protection permits for habitat conservation plan and a natural communities conservation plan that will allow some predictability in how this area will be managed for multi-species, multi-objective benefits. So that's sort of the crux of what the Bay Delta Conservation Plan is. It is projected to cost $25 billion to build and construct and maintain over 50 years. That is, the conversations about how it will be paid for are still preliminary, but preliminary conversations are 10 billion would be covered by state water contractors, 7 billion by federal water contractors. And I know that has an $8 billion gap. The rest of it would be covered by other sources, including federal money for habitat, as well as state bond issuance for habitat restoration. So a significant portion of the costs associated with the project are expected to be around the habitat conservation and restoration. Where they are in the process is that the draft EIS was due November 15th. That was before the government shutdown. I'm not sure if that's been adjusted, but it should be out soon. It will have 120-day comment period. The record of decision and notice of decision, it's both a federal and state process, would be expected in September 2014. And when I inquired of the state, they said they thought they could expect the habitat permits by the end of 2014. I'll say that's a little hard to believe, and the woman on the other end of the phone sounded like she had a straight face, but she did say things could change. But that is what they are telling us at this point in time in terms of how it might be rolled out. So you can see that the plan, if they are successful moving forward, would be ready for construction. They expect to start construction on those tunnels two years after getting the permits, so that would be 2016. So then I said I would talk a little bit about the costs of D cell and state water. And using the costs that were presented for the state water project, in 2009, we did a study to evaluate how much it would cost for us to restart the desalination plant. We have escalated that cost for inflation. We expect it to be about $24.8 million in 2013, and the O and M would be about $4.6 million. It would have a yield of 3,125 acre feet, and it would be a very, very reliable yield, you know, one of the few yields you can turn on and expect to have the water come out of the tap. But it would be at a cost, a variable cost, just for the operation and maintenance of $1,470 an acre foot. Just to give you sort of something to compare it to in terms of what the Bay Delta Conservation Plan might cost us in terms of the same kind of yield. We think, based on the more conservative of the information that's available from the state, that we would see an average increase in yield of 600 acre feet per year. The capital cost to the city would be about $7.3 million. The operation and maintenance cost would be about $18,000 a year. That's the incremental cost. The total cost of the state water project is more like $750,000 for us. And then the O and M cost would translate to, again, just on that variable cost, $30 an acre foot. So you can see that even if they're off by a huge factor in terms of the yield, the incremental cost just doesn't come close to the incremental cost of D cell. So just to look at it a different way, just sort of apples to apples, the capital investment for BDCP is about $7 million. Capital investment to get desalination started is about $25 million. So the cost of the Bay Delta Plan would have to more than triple before it begin to get to what we think is a fairly low estimate for the desalination plant. And then the operating costs, this is representative of all of our operating costs for the state water project, both the current project costs as well as the new project costs, and this is representative of what our annual operating cost for D cell would be. So I just wanted to put that in perspective of what it is, what's out there, what the issues related to state water are, and how it works for the city as one of its supplies. And with that, Ray and I are very happy to answer questions.
Great. Mr. Hutchison, why don't you ask that question again?
Okay. First off, when those tunnels are completed, will the pumps continue to operate, or will they be shut down so that you avert that problem of backwash or whatever it is that you want to call it?
Are you referring to the existing pumps that are through the delta?
Yeah, they were shown in both slides, I just didn't know.
Yeah, there would be dual conveyance, so you would have both the underground tunnels that would be available, plus you would continue to have conveyance through the delta, so you have both options.
So, but conveyance through the delta presents the problem we have today, does it not?
It does. So most of the water, the intention of DWR, the Department of Water Resources and the federal project, would be that most of the water would be conveyed through those tunnels. And the reason for having two tunnels at this point is basically to allow for operations and maintenance of the facility so that you're not just shut down completely. And basically, one of the main reasons for the Bay Delta Conservation Plan and the twin tunnels is that you avoid the seismic risks associated with having the water being conveyed through the delta, because if you have a major earthquake in the delta, those levees could break and suck in a bunch of salt water, and then basically you don't have the ability to transport that water through the delta anymore.
But these tunnels don't have some exposure to earthquakes?
We're told that they would be constructed to withstand major earthquakes, and so that is one of the main reasons for those.
I'm not sure to whom I address this question. What's the reliability of state water? Can it not be turned off under certain conditions beyond our control?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hutchison, the reliability of state water is subject to a number of factors, including weather. So this year's been very dry, and our allocation of water is 35%. It's a relatively low allocation. It is also subject to interference, as Mr. Stokes indicated. If there was an earthquake that caused the levees to fail, or if there's flooding that caused levees to fail, the levees are what, just very much like what happened in Louisiana, keep the seawater out, we would see a major disturbance to the delta. So when we looked at the state water in terms of reliability within Santa Barbara's water supply planning, we did acknowledge that it could potentially be interrupted for a year or two. If that happened during a period of critical drought, it would be really difficult for us to manage, as you saw from our supply planning approach. However, we did build in, in the long-term planning approach, a safety factor that would allow us, allows us to plan for a short-term interruption of any one supply like that.
Is state water not subject also to regulatory problems beyond our control, whether federal or state?
That's one of the main drivers for the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, is it is seeking to get the regulatory permissions to operate in a more reliable, more predictable way for the next 50 years. So it really, those two permits that I was talking about, the Habitat Conservation Plan and the Natural Communities Conservation Plan, are regulatory permits that would set some certainty for how the Bay Delta is going to be operated to meet habitat needs, to meet water supply needs, to address, you know, a number of different issues, and try and take away some of that unpredictability about what's going to happen in terms of reliability. And it's going to be, that's one of the challenges, will be one of the challenges of trying to get those permits, is that there are a number of stakeholders, all with very different vested interests in the delta, who have very different opinions about how it should be managed.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Bjork, you talked about imported water versus D cell cost per acre foot. To put it in perspective, what value do we assign to the water that we have here locally in terms of acre foot cost?
I'm sorry, could you ask?
The value we would assign for comparison for Kachuma Gibraltar water?
Gibraltar water is really a very low variable cost for us, almost zero. We have to treat almost all of our supplies. So I'm taking the treatment cost that cater out of the equation because it's the same for almost all of our supplies, but the variable costs for Gibraltar have to do with operating, maintaining the reservoir. The cost for Kachuma water is more on the range of $100 an acre foot in terms of our annual allocation cost. State water, the variable cost to us is about $280 an acre foot. We've got, if you translate the fixed costs that we've paid in the capital investment, because we've made a huge capital investment over the last two decades, it becomes very much higher on an acre foot cost, but the variable cost is still fairly low. And then, as I said, the D cell variable cost is pretty close to $1,500 an acre foot.
Well, that was kind of what my next question would be. So what the costs reflected here are without the infrastructure in terms of the imported and the state? I mean, that's just when you finally turn this spigot on, that's what the water itself is going to cost.
I have tried to show, in the costs that I showed reflected there, what future costs, what the future cost decisions would look like to our ratepayers. So what the future capital costs for projected facilities from the Bay Delta facility would look like in comparison to what it would look like if we decided we wanted to use D cell instead. You know, unfortunately, we can't say absolutely that we won't need D cell as well, but we certainly work very hard to try and manage our supplies in a way that will push that off as long as possible because of the costs involved.
Right. And then what remedies does a small agency have if, for example, our banked water is not available when we need it? We banked these 4,000, whatever their units they were, and all of a sudden we go to it and it's not there. What are our remedies?
That's a really good question, because the way that those banks are set up, there are conditions under which the water purveyor does or doesn't have to give it to you. So in a very dry year, the agency that we're banking with may not be required to give us the water. And Mr. Stokes can speak to this as well, but our experience as an agency, CCWA's experience as an agency, is that the water suppliers that are banking that water have tried very hard to meet the requests of the people who've banked the water, in part because it represents a real opportunity for them on an ongoing basis to have us bank with them.
That's correct. And I think the city's also done a great job of carrying over water in San Luis Reservoir, which you're now utilizing this year to meet some of your, or in 2014, you're anticipating to utilize it. So that's been a great opportunity, I think, in foresight, by banking that water in San Luis Reservoir.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Stokes, you're with the Central Coast Water Authority?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm sorry, your title again?
Executive Director.
Okay. So my understanding is that the Bay Delta Plan is in the hands of the governor's office right now, but there's a proposal where the state legislators might take it over? I'm trying to remember what I read.
Well, the governor is certainly behind the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, and right now it rests with the Department of Water Resources and federal agencies. There, I think what you may be referring to is the Delta Stewardship Council, which was created out of legislation in 2009. And part of that legislation stated that the Delta Stewardship Council would prepare a delta plan, which they've done, and that once the Bay Delta Conservation Plan is finished, that it would basically be dropped into the delta plan. The Delta Stewardship Council released their delta plan, and immediately seven lawsuits were filed against it. So those lawsuits and that plan, which I think may be what you're referring to, are not necessarily directly related to the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, but there is a dotted line basically from the delta plan to BDCP. So there's no, right now, it will continue to be undertaken by the state and the federal agencies.
And isn't a no-tunnel alternative still in the mix?
Yes, and the Bay Delta Conservation Plan itself, as well as the environmental documents, are anticipated to come out in mid to late November. So at this point, you know, there's no position as far as CCWA is concerned on that, and once those documents are released, then we will analyze all the various alternatives, just like everyone else will. And so I say this, our board has not taken a position on the Bay Delta Conservation Plan because we're still awaiting analysis, and we're waiting the final documents to be released.
Okay. I'm ready to make comments, Madam Mayor, but we still have questions?
You can go into comments. I don't think we have any public speaker slips, so go right ahead.
Speaker slips, okay. Thank you. Well, I don't see how we cannot continue with getting water through the state water project. We're in it now, and there's greater forces at play deciding what's going to happen with water supply, water conveyance, water quality, habitat restoration in the Bay Delta area. It's, I'm not saying it's, yeah, it is, it's kind of over our heads. And I just think we have to stay in the game, and I appreciate that we live in an arid climate, and we have to get water supply from a lot of different sources. After reading the Climate Change Action Plan that our staff put together last year, it's clear that there's going to be incredible changes in our climate and how California's water supply traditionally has been in snowpack, and that's going to change over to a lot more rain. So we're going to have a lot more rain, it's going to be flashier. So I do encourage that we bank. It's not the most progressive environmental way to live, having water come from other sources, and we're relying on water hundreds of miles away, but that's how it is, and we have to make sure that our residents have something to drink here. I think, this is my prediction, so that we will fire up the D cell plant eventually. The, I mean, I read the whole report, and climate change, global climate disruption is real, and we'll see it happening, and I think it's going to affect our water supply in great measure. In terms of state water supplies being deliverable, I think it is questionable, depending on what's happening politically, what's happening in Mother Nature, but whatever it is that is given to us, we really need it. So I will stay on top of this. This is one of my areas of interest, and I'm so glad that Santa Barbara does have an array of supply, our groundwater, our surface supply, and what we take from the San Inez River. And I will mention, of course, that it is my goal to share it with the fish and the animals, so I'll keep an eye on that as well. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Bjork, you mentioned that Santa Barbara is banking water in groundwater basins elsewhere. Do you know where?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, I do know where, but I'm going to defer to--
The guy asked you about--
Mr. Stokes again, because, and I want to thank CCWA, because they've been the, as an agency, Mr. Stokes has gone out and found these opportunities for us, negotiated the opportunities for us as an individual agency, but on behalf of the CCWA. So they've actually negotiated the agreements, and so--
Some of the water, and I don't recall the city, the specific agencies that we have done exchanges with as far as the city is concerned, because we have 13 different water agencies in Central Coast Water Authority, but some of the areas would be Irvine Ranch Water District in Southern California, Palm, and then some of these are exchanges, so that we're actually exchanging current water that's available to us that's not needed, and then they actually return it to us in a year then which they don't need it. So some of that occurs, and there's also additional groundwater banks in the Central Valley that are also available to us. So there's different types of mechanisms that are available. It's not just simply putting water into the ground, but also exchanges come into-- It's not just simply putting water into the ground, but also exchanges come into play with other state water contractors.
Councilmember White, Ms. Dyer has reminded me, it's Dudley Ridge, which is actually a groundwater banking project, and Palmdale, which I believe was a water exchange agreement.
Thank you.
Is there, I'm thinking of Gibraltar Reservoir and the siltation happening there. Has there ever been any cost estimates of what it would take or with permitting and everything of D cell, I don't even know what you would call it, opening up, you know, creating more capacity in the reservoir? Getting rid of the stuff?
Madam Mayor, in the late 1980s, the city was looking extensively at expanding the Gibraltar Reservoir. I believe the assessment at that time was that expanding the reservoir was more cost-effective than trying to reclaim lost capacity. That effort resulted in litigation that subsequently resulted in a settlement agreement that we called the pass-through agreement, that had a goal of stabilizing the 1989 yield from Gibraltar, which was about 8,000 acre feet of water. So just trying to keep it the same and keep it from diminishing. And we are still continuing to, we're waiting actually now for the environmental documents to allow us to store the yield from Gibraltar in Kachuma, that will effectively sort of try to preserve the capacity in Gibraltar. And that's an extremely cost-effective way of approaching it. As soon as we get that in place, we will continue to investigate what our longer-term options for Gibraltar are. We certainly, it's an incredibly important resource to us because of the type of water rights we have on that reservoir, but it is also extremely challenging because of where it is. It's just very, very remote.
I'm sorry, the timeline of when you think that information will be forthcoming?
I'm very hopeful that we'll have the final exchange agreement so that we can rely on, we can project and have some basis for relying on and analyzing future water supplies from Gibraltar to compare against the costs and development of redeveloping Gibraltar. Hoping we'll have that within this calendar year. The government shutdown again did affect that process. And then we would expect to start looking at the questions about what would it take to do something different, probably in the next calendar year.
Great.
And we have budgeted for that.
Great. Mr. House.
This is, there's no action on today's report. This is just to receive the report. And I see you've made a pretty cogent case for the contract extension. Appreciate that. But I just want to comment that in the time since we've had our D cell plant built, and now the cost of desalination has gone down at least by half. And we're not alone. I mean, there's thousands and thousands, I think 14,000 or 15,000 D cell plants in the world now operating. And it seems to me that we should really set our sights ultimately in the long, long run, or as soon as possible, I guess might be the other way of saying it, about really being self-reliant. And as the technology improves and as we find the right economy of scale, perhaps that plant isn't at the right exact sweet spot. 3,000 acre feet sounds like a lot, but you know it's not in consideration of how much we really do need. And with the kind of changes that Kathy's talking about, I really think that should be a long-range policy goal, is to become as self-reliant as possible and really untether from the state water supply. But again, right now, the numbers don't support it. I just have a little question on that. So what efforts do we take, or how do we look forward to a future where D cell and really truly being self-reliant for these variables is viable? What are we doing to really prepare for that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, we're doing a number of things, actually. Kelly Dyer and I went down last week to visit a D cell plant in Redondo Beach that is a pilot plant that is doing a lot of research on the different membranes, the different types of technology, intake structures that will be protective of marine animals, and looking at the work that they were doing. It was very instructive and very interesting. It is still, hasn't sort of broken the threshold where it is anywhere near cost competitive with our other supplies. Interestingly, for the LA area, it is getting into that area where it is starting to be cost competitive with their state water project costs and other costs that they're looking at, because their new water supply costs are going up significantly. I believe it's in our best interest to try and continue to push off the need for that decision as long as possible, because as you indicated, there are continuing, is continuing evolution in that area technically. And there's some very promising new things out there, a membrane called graphene, which is, you know, a nanoparticle thick and barely needs any energy, still not ready for prime time. It's still in sort of the research and development phase. But we're all watching to see if one of those new technologies will come along that really will dramatically cut the energy requirements for desalination. We maintain our existing permitting, so we try to keep our plant as ready to go and as available as economically as we can. The state is talking about changing the permitting requirement, so we may be faced sometime in the near future with an issue of how much and when do we want to address those costs. I think there's real value to keeping the permitted plant because it gives us real flexibility. So we're doing a lot to try and make sure that we are keeping up with where the industry is going, being poised and ready to know when it's the right time to make the decisions about changing, making recommendations to change the reliance of our water supply, and trying to make sure that we have that information available for council and that it's up to date, accurate, and has a sound basis for where it's coming from.
Well, thank you for that. I would really think it would be of value to the council once in a while, once every year or two, to get a report back on what the state of the science is and how close we're getting to that, because it's of critical interest. And at this point, there's, just the dollars are speaking for the need to connect and to do this extension. But the minute we can really see the horizon that we could achieve, I think it'd be good. So thank you for your efforts.
Okay. Thank you very much. To be continued. I appreciate your report. Move on to item number 12. Casa Esperanza programmatic changes. Ms. Gray.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Sue Gray, and I'm the Community Development Business Manager in the Community Development Department. Casa Esperanza has recently undergone several programmatic changes. I'm trying to figure out how to get this off the screen, and I don't know how. It's just dead. Great, thanks. I don't have one. I don't need that, though. No, I just didn't want that up. Thanks. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties. On July 1st, Casa Esperanza switched to a sobriety-based shelter program for their 100-bed year-round shelter program. On September 17th, they closed the drop-in center services for non-shelter residents, and they suspended the community kitchen lunch program for non-shelter residents. And on December 1st, when they expand to the 200-bed emergency winter shelter, that will also be a sobriety-based program. Casa Esperanza receives funding from the city from several different sources. There is an annual general fund contribution for the emergency winter shelter program. They have a CDBG Community Development Block Grant for their day center services. They receive two city human service grants, one for the community kitchen for provision of meals, and one for a jail discharge program. And they also have a home grant for tenant-based rental assistance. That's a one-time grant that they just use until they've given up all the assistance that they can. Due to the programmatic changes, Casa Esperanza has requested revisions to two of these grants. The first one is their human services grant for the community kitchen meal provisions. They're requesting that their fiscal year 14 projections be reduced from serving meals to 1,700 unduplicated people per year down to 960 unduplicated people per year. And the number of meals would be reduced from 175,000 per year to 90,000 per year. And the second one is their Community Development Block Grant for day center services. And they are requesting that their fiscal year 14 projections be reduced from providing services to 1,300 unduplicated people, again, down to the 960 people. Those are the same people that will be provided services for meal provision. And they are requesting that the number of unduplicated people they place in housing or residential treatment be reduced from 475 to 300 people per year. On September 24th, the Community Development and Human Services Committee met, reviewed these requests, and approved the community kitchen human services grant revision request. They often approve simple requests for changes in contracts if it doesn't involve a dollar amount, or if it doesn't mean transferring a contract from one agency to another. The day center Community Development Block Grant Revision, because it's from HUD, requires an amendment to the city's annual action plan. That's the annual plan we submit every year to HUD. It's basically our application to them for our CDBG grant. This amendment requires council approval, so that's why we're here today. Staff is recommending that council approve the proposed amendment to the city's annual action plan and approve the revision of Casa Esperanza's CDBG contract for day center services. In addition to the action plan amendment and contract revision, staff is also recommending that council authorize the assistant city administrator to execute an agreement with Casa Esperanza for the operation of the emergency winter shelter this year, starting December 1st and going through March 31st, 2014. Since its opening in 1999, Casa Esperanza has operated the emergency winter shelter, and they will continue to do so this year. But as mentioned earlier, it's going to be changing to a sobriety-based shelter. Council approved the $75,575 during the fiscal year 2014 budget process. And finally, I just wanted to give you a heads up that the changes at Casa Esperanza may have an impact on the warming centers this season, this winter season. The purpose of the warming centers is to ensure that homeless individuals, particularly those that are vulnerable, have emergency temporary shelter in order to avoid hypothermia and death on nights of inclement weather. Due to the expected increase in people being served for this, council may receive a one-time request to expand the warming centers for this winter only. We currently, they currently receive a human services grant of $10,000 from the city. And I just wanted to let you know, too, that the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness has formed a task force to develop an emergency response plan to ensure that the warming centers are operated safely for both their staff, volunteers, and the people that come there. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Mike Foley, Executive Director of Casa Esperanza, as well as Reverend Mark Asman, longtime board member, are also here if you have questions for them.
Great. Questions first, and then we do have some public comment. Mr. House.
To your last, almost last comment there, it's in the last sentence in our staff report. We're expected possibly to receive a request for an increase for the warming centers for this winter only. What does that mean? I mean, is there some other source of funding coming next year from outside that we don't know about, or are they going away, or what's happening?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember House, we're thinking for this winter only because the C3H collaborative is trying to work on a longer-term solution so that the warming centers right now, and also last year, they're kind of on the border of providing a service that they did not intend to do originally. Originally, the intent was to house people who could not or would not go to the shelters so they wouldn't die on the street. And so as a collaborative, it was decided that we don't want them to be an emergency shelter. They're there for a specific purpose. I think they've been, and that's why we're developing this plan with them, to help them. So in answer to your question, we're hoping by next year, they will have a better handle on the community needs for their group, and also if there is going to be an increase, they can apply through human services. They already receive a $10,000 grant.
Okay. So then the other question, which is the big one for me, and it's for everybody, obviously. We know how many people have been accessing the services so far, and we know that there's a need to make this change for financial reasons, as well as for the therapeutic environment, if you want to call it that, for those who are sober. But, so where are the people going to go? And what are we going to do in response to their being there?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember House, that's a good question, and the answer is, we're not sure at this point. We've heard from our local law enforcement that there's been an impact on the communities in Isla Vista and Carpinteria. They haven't seen much of an impact here. It's a manner of providing services, and how much does this community want to provide? I think part of, and Mr. Foley can answer this also, but I think the model that was set up at Casa Esperanza was not, in hindsight, was not the best model to do, because it had some unintended consequences. They, the idea was to have the community kitchen and the day center services to draw people in to help them get housed. I don't know that that was the best use. Now everyone is talking about housing first. We have different strategies. Housing first, housing ready, and then reunification with family. And that's the focus, those three right now are kind of the focus of the C3H collaborative. So I think as a community, we're looking at things a little differently, the whole model a little differently.
Okay. Well, and again, you've got some high talent here in the room, so I'll just put the question out a second time. Not through the eyes or the lens of Casa Esperanza, and not through the eyes or the lens of the system, but through the eyes and the lens of the people who are needing the services. Where are they going to go, and what are we going to do about it when they're there? So those are really important questions for me, and it doesn't mean I wouldn't support what is being recommended. But I'd like to hear from those who have that knowledge. Mr. Foley, or Mr. Asman, or Reverend Asman, I'm not sure, but somebody would like maybe to take a moment, because I've seen a lot of shrugging shoulders about this, and I think these questions need to be answered, or at least addressed.
Reverend Asman?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. We are grateful, actually, for the questions because we know how concerned the community is for all of our citizens. We didn't, our decision to close the day center portion of our programs and suspend the community kitchen were not decisions we made lightly. We know the consequences. Some of this has to do with sustainable funding, as well as, as referenced by Sue, changing models of how best to serve the homeless in our communities. So I'm in another capacity on clue, working with other organizations in our community to come up with ways to provide meals that we are not able to serve at the community kitchen while it is being suspended for day use. So I know that that conversation is taking place in the larger community. The day center function where people can come in and rest safely during the day, sadly, there is no real option or alternative.
Thank you, thank you for doing the best you can on that end. And the question for me still stays alive. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss? Do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I do. Mr. Foley, the daycare center, or the day center services and meals will continue to be provided to shelter residents, is that on a sober basis also? Okay. And we talk about, on the second page of this, changes or revisions to Casa Esperanza's human services agreement. Are those reductions in costs instead of reduction in services? Do you know what I'm talking about?
One more time.
Okay. It says that their September 24th meeting, CDHCSC, voted to recommend that council approve cities blah, blah, blah. The committee also approved a revision to Casa Esperanza's Human Services Agreement 24, 424, in the amount of 42,500, reducing the number of people served, blah, blah. Are these reductions in costs we're talking about?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I figured. It just wasn't clear there. Let's see, for staff, it says recommending that council authorize assistant city administrator to execute an agreement with Casa for the operation of the winter shelter. Is this a cost reduction also?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, it is not a cost reduction for the city's portion of funding. This is their entire grant. What we're asking is that their services, their provision of services be reduced. We didn't.
But if we're reducing services? But if we're reducing services, why are we not reducing costs?
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Whoever.
We, what we're at, we are now focusing exclusively on shelter care and not the drop-in services that Casa Esperanza is providing at the building. We still need to provide three meals a day for folks, and we still have a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar cost for providing three meals a day for all the people who will live there.
Who, clients?
Yes, absolutely. So, that would cover the cost of cooks, and the cost that we're asking to transfer would cover the cost of a case manager. We still need the government funding that we have to provide the services that we're providing. We're not asking for a reduction in our grants. We have, however, reduced our overall costs to be more financially stable.
Okay. Are you going to do an audit at some point of recent years to try to figure out how you might do this better and not get in trouble?
We have audits on every, we have an outside auditor who has completed audits for every single year, and I know that the city has those. We have a new finance committee that involves people from outside the agency, financial experts like Tom Schleck and Joe Tumbler, who have been driving the processes and making sure that we are really very, very focused on making sure that our finances are cash flow neutral to cash flow positive.
And are these new auditors or your traditional ones? You mentioned we have outside auditors.
We have outside auditors, and this outside auditor has done our books in the past.
Okay. It says here you expect an increase of people. I assume that means on the street, this last paragraph. Why do we expect that? And I realize we're not providing services for people who in the past we provided services, but that's, makes the assumption that they're going to stick around even though they're not getting anything. Is that, we're just being conservative in doing this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we're not sure what the impact will be.
Yeah, I understand.
We're assuming, and I think Mr. Foley has estimated about fifty people per night that will not be able to access their shelter because of the sobriety-based model.
Right.
We don't know if they'll stay in town or go out of town. We don't know if they're going to come from Isla Vista downtown during inclement weather. So, we're trying to plan for it.
Just in case, sort of thing?
Case.
Okay.
Yes. We also, I'm sorry, we also are trying to set up some sort of protocol so that those people who may access the warming centers, and they are sober, and they can go to Casa Esperanza, maybe they didn't want to before because of the semi-chaotic nature of it, they might want to go there now. So, we're trying to set up something with the warming centers where they can be diverted to the shelter and open up beds for people.
Okay. Do they have the personnel to make that determination, the warming shelters? Yeah.
I suspect that if that's the way that we go with this plan, that we might come to you and ask for funding for a temporary position to do that. The request will either be for increased staff to, staff in overflow kind of shelter, or staff to help kind of decide where people should go and who really should access the warming centers.
Right. You know that calls in the immediate area of Casa Esperanza and Lower Milpus have dropped by, I think, fifty percent in the last month and a half. Do we know if they've increased by a comparable proportion in Isla Vista or elsewhere?
I'm not sure if they're comparable. I've just heard from Sergeant Ed Olson.
Anecdotally, that.
Anecdotally, that. He's hearing from the sheriff that that's...
That might help us in figuring out, are people leaving town, or are they just moving around the town? Thank you very much.
Other questions? Okay, we'll have some public comment. We have Jose Arturo Ortiz, the Noratinas Gallegos, and June Sokel, and then Ethan Shankman. There's two minutes there for you. Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor, and members of the city council, thank you for your time. My name is Jose Arturo Ortiz de Martinez Gallegos. I was born here in Santa Barbara, St. Francis Hospital, grew up in the East Side, went to Franklin School, San Antonio High, San Antonio High School. I did a little bit of city college. I worked in the aerospace defense industry, and also on telecommunications. After nine eleven, about a month after, I lost my job, and two thousand and two became homeless for the first time ever. I went to Casa Esperanza the winter of two thousand and two into two thousand and three, and it was chaotic. It was a nightmare. Two thousand and three, I left for Phoenix, Arizona, was there for over eight years, came back in October of two thousand and eleven. I got into Casa Esperanza. Again, a nightmare. You cannot put alcoholics, drug addicts, seriously mentally ill, and people like myself and many others who have worked hard all our lives, throw them all in one big, huge, you know, warehouse. It does not work. I was treated with disrespect. My dignity was stripped away, and not just me, but many others. And as far as the food was concerned, it was bad. I am diabetic type, too, and just no way I was able to eat that food. I sucked of salads and a fruit salad and maybe a couple of slices of bread, and that was it. As a homeless person, I know many, many individuals like myself who refuse to go to Casa Esperanza. A social worker who helped me to get, to apply for Social Security, which now I'm receiving, she got me a bed this past January.
Wind up, please.
I refused. I told her, "No, no, please don't put me in here." But she was very kind, and she just gave it a shot. I was kicked out in the third week of March. I was happy. There I am, sleeping outside in the cold. I was happy. And as I told Ms. Sharon Broom, who's here today, she did a little story on me on the Sentinel, and I told her, "I'd rather have hypothermia twenty times over."
You need to wind up, please.
Uh-huh. Excuse me?
You're way past your two minutes, so if you could wind up, please.
Oh, sorry about that. But anyways, shut her down.
June Sokel? Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Mr. House, I was very pleased with your question about where will they go. I think it's a very big concern for a lot of us who are living in the community, and concerned about the fact that Casa Esperanza, out of necessity, has had to do some regrouping and restructuring. I work with the Gil Day Foundation, and we've been a longtime supporter of Casa Esperanza. We are a major donor for them, and unfortunately, as the operation has moved through a period of time, there just simply weren't enough of us who were donating to that particular facility. So, it's a time to, you know, to take a look at how the community as a whole is going to approach the issue of where do they go. And it was sad that the man who just spoke had such a bad experience there. I don't know how many of you saw a testimonial in the Independent, and it says grateful to Casa Esperanza. And this was written to say, "I would like to express my thankfulness for the services they provided for me while I resided there. I am a two thousand and thirteen graduate of the Casa Esperanza Culinary Arts Training Program. After being homeless for over twelve years, I have been given the skills and confidence I need to move on to being a productive person in our community. I give kudos to my instructor, Executive Chef Augusta Codillo, for the essential qualification that he taught me to advance in this field. I also thank the staff for their support." I think Casa Esperanza did the best they could with the programs, given the resources that they have. So, our task now is to get more resources for that particular program.
Ethan Shankman, and then Robert Burke.
The warming centers appear to depend a great deal on non-secular religious franchises to shelter these people. And when you're dealing with spiritual issues, it really hits very deeply psychologically for those who are being served. Currently, from what has been observed, you have cohabitation in the sanctuary, operating under mutually conflicting conditions of faith, values, and systems. And we have government subsidy to further support that which people have discrepancies all the way around. Brainwash, or otherwise deciphered as brainwash, or what have you, just some very oppressive environments. This is what I would suggest, that if we were going to continue with a warming center program, that because the religious nonprofits have their own independent arrangement as nonprofits with the government, that that is something that is separated from city tax funds, and that secular franchises such as the Vets Hall and other non-religious-specific programs would be able to fulfill this need. Also, I believe that if you were, under these circumstances, because of the stress that has been observed, to not have both genders cohabitate even at the same facility. So, from a church perspective, if you wanted to continue with churches, that you assign one chapel for guys and one chapel for females. But right now, I think that it has caused a lot of tension, unsaid conflict, and ill will here locally that should be restructured.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I did not plan to come up and speak, so this is spontaneous. I spent three weeks many years ago at Casa Esperanza before I received permanent housing. I've also been homeless off and on for about eighteen years, and when I was sheltered in Casa Esperanza, I went, "Wow, this is different. This is better. They have professional services. They have doctors there." There is a big difference between the Rescue Mission and Casa Esperanza as far as what their mission is. The Rescue Mission is house them, that's it, you know, and they do not provide many social services. But Casa Esperanza was, and except for two specific incidents with staff members, I'm always, was always impressed with how professional and how ethical that I was treated. I felt like I was a real person there rather than somebody just dragged in off the street. The food, yeah, I liked the food. It was good. For me, the only complaint I have is they would not let me play the piano. So, I'm grateful for what they do. I give them a big thumbs up as far as the services, how they provide the services, and how they treat the people, and I wanted to make that affirmation on that. I appreciate your attention.
Okay, that concludes public comments. It's back to the council. Ms. Murio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm ready to move the staff recommendation, but I'd like to ask Reverend Asman or Mr. Foley to come up and talk to us a little bit about the shelter's successes. I'm remembering that when Casa Esperanza was established, Sue Adams, who had a business on State Street, told the story of getting people off of State Street, "Well, where will they go?" And so, that's why a Day Center was created. And even if a housing-first model now appears to be a better choice, it does seem that it was done in good faith, and that bringing people in with food and services, and then teaching them job skills, or helping them get sober, you know, it seemed like a good idea. And I know you've had successes over the years. I was hoping you could tell us about that.
Well, I think you've summarized the original intent of how this whole project came together, along with being also the winter shelter and the Community Kitchen. I think part of what our analysis was, as we were looking very carefully at sustainable financing, the Day Center portion of our programs did not have the same sustainable revenue stream as the other more residential case management side of our programs. So, as we analyzed that, knowing that we needed to stabilize our financial house, that was the reason why, as well as the fact that there has been a change in the direction of how government agencies are supporting services for the homeless. So, it was a combination of those two factors that Mike and the staff analyzing our programs and our finances and our grants and governmental sources of income, that that was the painful decision we had to make. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think Mr. Foley would like to add to that. Thank you, Reverend.
Well, I just used one number briefly, and that is, in the last five years, one thousand seven hundred and fifty people have gone from homelessness to housing through Casa Esperanza. Many of those are people who lived there, some of those are people who didn't, who lived on the street and were able to secure TBRA funding or rapid rehousing funding that we were able to get housed. Going forward, we may not be doing small things for thousands and thousands of people, but we will be doing bigger things, we believe, for hundreds and hundreds of people. For example, right now, if somebody is on the streets and is using drugs and alcohol, and they want to get sober, and that window of opportunity comes for an outreach worker, there's nowhere to take them right now where they could move into a place where they're asked and required to refrain from the use of drugs and alcohol. Now, we provide that for them. And when someone gets out of detox, or gets out of the hospital, and they've, or even jail, and they've experienced sobriety, now there's a place for them to go. We believe we're completing the continuum of care for shelter care, and it's our hope that everyone can support that effort.
And you have a recovery coordinator there. I can see her face, I can't remember.
Carmen.
Carmen, yes.
Right.
And I know that twelve-step meetings have increased there as I'm connected with the recovery community, so I really have a lot of hope for Casa Esperanza being a place. I think the statistics are sixty percent of homeless people have substance abuse problems. I know it's not a hundred percent. I've been corrected on that before.
We've been, we've been around forty-five to fifty percent who come to us with drug and alcohol addiction problems. Fifty percent of the people we serve don't have drug and alcohol addiction problems, which point to the need, if shelter care is determined, as so many people have, is to be one of the most important services, that it be a place where people are leaving the culture of the streets behind and moving towards housing through the shelter.
And through the Milpus Action Task Force, your organization will be looking at impacts in the neighborhood related to the changes in your services?
We will continue our work on the Milpus Action Task Force and following all of the work that's going on.
We went to the Milpus Action Task Force before we even implemented these changes to bring their feedback in, and have been working very closely with them these last several months.
Okay, very good. So, Madam Mayor, I do support the funding as it is, and I support the recommendation from our advisory board and the hard work that staff has been doing to resolve this situation. And I'd like to thank the warming centers, because I think they will take up some of the slack from people being turned away from Casa Esperanza. The Organic Soup Kitchen and Will Bridge are also offering more lunch programming, so I'm glad people will find something to eat. And, you know, even last night, I closed one of my windows and got another blanket because it was so cold, and I live in a house, and so I know when people are on the street and it's so cold out there. And I'm grateful that you're still continuing to offer services, and I'm on the Milpus Action Task Force, and will keep an eye, of course, on the neighborhood and its impacts, because that's part of our job, too. So, I move the staff recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I've spoken to a number of the stakeholders in and around the neighborhood, and lately and today spoke to a number of the board members as well. One of the concerns, well, number one, one of the anecdotal things that they did see in improvement, I think, is maybe Mr. Hotchkiss pointed out, in terms of the neighborhood condition, and I've asked police, and I've asked a number of people in the county and the city, and it really hasn't seemed to pop up anywhere. Isla Vista did see a little bit more of an increase. I don't know if these are the same people or not, it's hard to tell. But this is a kind of a tough low, but I think in a lot of ways, a positive move towards this sober model that we're doing. But one of the concerns that a lot of board members have was about the financing, and they felt a little bit out of school on some of the issues in terms, and I know how complicated it can be to look at a nonprofit balance sheet. And I was wondering, currently, they have an actuary service that they use to produce their financials, but given the sources of revenue, which I also... their financials, but given the sources of revenue, which also include government resources, I wonder if there shouldn't be some kind of oversight by either our agency or somebody in the county or our, our finance department, some kind of reporting done so that we would have, as public officials entrusted with the public funds, some assurance that we were going in the right direction. I'm sure that the intent is to do that, but I also was a little taken aback at where, where it seems to be right now in terms of the financial situation, so. I didn't know if that was a possibility, and maybe I'd ask Mr. Armstrong that, if that is in the, in the world of either legal or practical possibilities, or that is something desirous that we would have. I don't even know if there's a precedent for that.
And there really isn't. We do require that they provide us reports, and we go through the reports, and as Mr. Foley indicated, you know, they provide us audited financials. You know, we don't get into forensic accounting or detailed accounting with any of the, we, I mean, we, through the Human Services Program, we provide funding to probably 30 or 40 nonprofit organizations, and we require reporting, and they provide their reports, and we review them. But I think to go that next level, you know, one, there's an expense to it, and second, do you really need to do it? I think, you know, if you direct us to do it, we would then do it, but I think, you know, you know, I mean, there's a lot of anecdotal things out there, and, and the fact that they may have been running a deficit doesn't mean that our monies were being spent improperly, it just means that money going out the door was greater than money coming in the door, and I, that's my understanding of their, their main problem. And we, there's lots of nonprofits in that situation in this community right now, and probably some that we're funding. So I mean, if council wanted to go that way, we could come back with a plan and a cost to it, but it's not something we typically do with any of the nonprofits. We have had situations with human services where the staff has come and, you know, raised concerns about, you know, and typically that's when we don't get the reports, and then we get on the agency to provide us the reports, and in some cases, you know, the, the Human Services Committee in a future year has pulled funding out, or mid-year, we've, we've canceled contracts. So when we become aware of that, I think in this situation, it's more of a, like I said, a resources in, resources out, and they just, they run a deficit and have had to make correct, take corrective action.
No, and I wasn't meaning to imply malfeasance, but I did think of that as an idea only because some, some of the comments of some of the board members themselves that were, that were feeding, feeling a little chagrin in fact, it got as far as it did, and I didn't want to be in the position where we are with some other smaller types of people that we do serve, that we have to finally call them on the carpet and go. So, and, you know, and this is probably our biggest chunk of dough that we do put out through this, through this resource and for these, this very important service, so, you know, I don't want to see Casa go away, but I certainly want to make sure that we're doing the responsible thing as we assign taxpayer dollars to these, to these services. But I am, I am encouraged by the report from Mr. Foley and Reverend Asman about the, the sober aspect of it. I know how difficult that can be, and I know how incredibly unsuccessful sobriety efforts can be, and how challenging that can be. But I do think that having worked in the field, on the common ground count, in the morning, with some Casa Esperanza outreach workers, that you do see a lot of people that have come from other areas and come into town, and have heard and, and have these things and know where, think services are and whatnot, that maybe we can get a, a right-sized, directed service to those who mostly need it, and try to really target and keep people from dying on the streets by doing the right things. I think the effort's been there, I think it was a, as Ms. Murillo pointed out, and Sue Adams said it's a very good faith effort, but there were some extenuating consequences. We, you know, damaged the neighborhood, and I think it's important that we don't go back there to that, this situation.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Foley, I, I'm trying to put myself in your shoes, I sort of think that what I would have done, and perhaps you did, was you had an operating budget, and you have to rely to, what, 50% for private donations or contributions, is that about right? And, and suddenly, those started getting thinner and thinner, and you kept operating hoping that things would recover, and they didn't, and then ultimately you were, had to kind of, kind of come to reckoning here and change your operation. Is that an accurate description of how things came about?
Yes, and combined, combined-
That's okay.
Combined with the, not only the, the facts coming from research, the facts coming from data, the facts coming from where funding is coming, and how there's more funding available for sobriety-based programming, and sometimes there's a perfect storm of information, and we had a perfect storm of information where we knew that this was something that not only had to happen, but something that was the right thing to do moving forward.
Well, I hope part of that, that figuring was that the community really had been impacted in a way that you didn't want them to be.
Correct.
Good. So please keep in mind, I think Mr. Rouse brings up good points, provide services, but be really mindful of who's next door. Thank you.
Mr. House?
And I really appreciate your explaining in your letter and also today, how clear, as clearly as you did, the rationale and the hopeful side of the equation, you know, the intention behind sobriety-based programming, the complimentary side of that, the housing-first model, C3H's work, Lou, thank you very much, to all those who've stepped up, stepped up in that, and the warming centers. One of the things I noted in your letter, should the community rally support for the free lunch effort, Casa Esperanza would provide this service once again if sustainable funding can be secured. I just, I guess my, my bottom-line comment, which anyone working with this population would, I think, share, and that is that just because services are being reduced, it doesn't mean that people are being, going away somewhere. And if they do go back into the disappeared state, which, you know, is, that's not the direction we want to go. I mean, we want people to come in whatever state, and I remember the fundraising efforts and Sue and the, the whole amazing collection of folks that rallied for, for A Casa Esperanza really had that in mind, that in whatever state you are, you're welcome here, and this is perhaps that first step, but that opening and that, that's an opportunity. And so, and, and to the point of the effects on the immediate neighborhood, we know this is a regional problem, it's larger than that, but certainly the effects on Ilo Vista and the other communities adjoining ours are equally as important, and that's, so we need to have, we talk about oversight and looking at the impacts, which we don't truly know yet, but we know there's going to be an impact on certain individuals. Some will rally, some will actually take the sobriety approach, which we're hopeful for, but there's many others who aren't ready for that yet. And, and the revolving door that we have had as our system before we had Casa Esperanza of going into jail and coming back out and going back in and going back, a big circle, that's not good either. So my questions really do stand about, you know, where are the people going to go, and what is our community's response when they get there? Will it be the revolving door, or will we be able to find additional funding sources or be able to use our collaborative model to truly address these issues? And so I really admire and appreciate what you're doing to be, make sure that Casa Esperanza can sustain and be around for another day and maybe be part of the larger solution. But my heart truly goes out to those who will not be served now, who will not be fed and will not have a safe place to go, and who will be on some business's doorstep or under some culvert or some place when they could have been in some sheltered situation. I'm also concerned for the warming centers and what that's going to mean for them. They're not really structured to be able to handle some of the situations that come to their doorstep, mental illness as well as substance abuse combined heavily in this population. So anyway, thank you for what you're doing, I support the motion, but I just have to raise these concerns. Thank you.
Well, there's certainly a lot of value and honor in what you do, and, I don't know where that was, but something, something was calling out, but thank you for the work that you're doing, and it's important that you continue to do the work, even though you're cutting back services. I think the people who are going to remain in Casa Esperanza need your assistance and will come out a better, in a better place because of it, so I'm certainly supportive of the motion as well. And with that, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we have item number 13.
Review of fiscal year 2015 Human Services and Community Development Block Grant Funding Priorities, Application Release, and Funding Process.
Thank you, Ms. Gray, again.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, today we are coming before you for the Human Services Community Development Block Grant Application Release and Funding Process. We do this every year around this time, and I'm going to turn it over to Liz Stotts, our Community Development Program Specialist.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. As Sue said, we're here again to prepare for that Human Services and Community Development Block Grant Funding Cycle. I know we talked a little bit about it in the previous section, but we're going to go into more detail about the program itself and how it operates. Annually, council establishes the funding criteria, the priorities, reviews the funding schedule, and determines the funding availability before we distribute the funding applications. Today, we are recommending to council to review and provide direction on the funding priorities, which will guide the Community Development and Human Services Committee, approve the distribution of grant applications as well as the applicant criteria and the application review schedule, and establish a funding commitment of 640,821 from the fiscal year 2015 General Fund for the Human Services Program. The city has two funding sources from which grants to nonprofit organizations and city programs are awarded, federal CDBG funds and city human services funds, and I will review both. Each year since 1974, the city has received CDBG funds to undertake activities that meet one of three statutory objectives. Activities must either primarily benefit low and moderate income persons, eliminate or prevent slums or blight, or meet other urgent local community development needs. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which administers the CDBG program, also requires that CDBG-funded activities provide low- to moderate-income persons with decent housing, a suitable living environment, or expanded economic opportunities. CDBG funds can be used for a wide variety of projects and activities, primarily capital projects such as infrastructure improvements, rehabilitation, and economic development. A small portion of CDBG funds, no more than 15% of our city, of our annual allocation, may be expended, expended on public services. In addition to CDBG, council grants human services funds to local agencies that provide a wide array of public and social services to low and moderate-income city residents. The city human services fund is allocated by council annually and augmented with the CDBG public service funds. For fiscal year 2014, council approved funding for 55 activities. Forty-four of those were social service-type programs, and those were funded with human services funds, three of those with CDBG public service. Seven construction or rehabilitation projects and one economic development activity were recipients of CDBG funds. The funding recommendations are made to council by the Community Development and Human Services Committee, or the CDHSC, who council appoints to analyze and evaluate the grant request and interview the applicants before making its recommendations to council, who then make the final decisions on funding. Throughout the year, the committee's role also includes monitoring grantees' performance, conducting site visits of grantees, reviewing mandatory HUD reports, holding public hearings, discussing issues, and providing input to staff and council on the needs of this community. The CDHSC is made up of 13 members who represent a broad range of community interests, including representatives from each of the four low-income neighborhoods, and also one member serves as a liaison to the Neighborhood Advisory Council. The committee currently has vacancies in the business, African-American, housing interests, and housing authority categories. There were four applications submitted during this current recruitment cycle, and a vacancy in the downtown neighborhood category will also be coming in the near future. So if you know anyone, send them over, I'll be happy to talk to them.
Did we just lose somebody off that?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, we just received a resignation, but not in time to recruit for, for the current funding cycle, for the recruitment cycle, so it'll have to be in the spring. Council previously adopted the above priorities for CDBG funding, which are congruent with HUD's national objectives. Facilitate housing for low and moderate-income persons, revitalize downtown neighborhoods, strengthen or expand public or social service agencies, and economic development to create or retain jobs. Each year, council also establishes the priorities for the human and public services funds for the CDHSC to follow. Council previously adopted the priorities shown. First priority are programs that meet basic human needs and/or reduce the community impact of homelessness and/or reduce the community impact of gang violence via a formal collaboration with the South Coast Task Force on Gangs. Second priority is for programs that are preventative in nature or promote the highest degree of functioning the individuals capable of achieving. Attachment one of your CAR contains a list of fiscal year 2014 grants awarded by priority. The CDHSC recommends that the previously adopted CDBG and human services funding priorities remain unchanged for fiscal year 2015. In addition to meeting the city's funding priorities, eligible applicants must also demonstrate the ability to meet the criteria shown above, which council also previously adopted. Applicants must demonstrate, demonstrate that their proposals benefit low- to moderate-income Santa Barbara residents, address social or physical needs, present a marketing strategy, show support from intended clients, identify all funding sources, including from other public or private sources, have minimal administrative costs, identify geographical service area, and applicants that pay the local minimum wage receive an extra credit point when being evaluated. A full description of the applicant criteria is on attachment two of your CAR, and again, staff is not recommending changes to the criteria. Upon council's authorization today, a mandatory orientation will be held on November 7th. At this orientation, staff will detail the funding process, council's priorities, and the eligibility criteria. The applications will be available on November 11th, and once again, applicants will complete and submit their applications online using Zoom Grants. It's a web-based grant management program. The system has been in place for the last two years, and it has been successful, and it's made the submission process more streamlined and efficient. City staff will have immediate online access to the applications submitted before the deadline to review and provide feedback to the applicants, and this will give early applicants the opportunity to improve or correct any errors prior to the final due date. The application period will be December, will end December 13th at 4:30 PM, at which Zoom Grants will be locked, and no more submissions or revisions will be accepted. And to ensure that all applicants and all interested parties are, are able to compete, we will notify all current grantees, anybody that applied in the past, and anybody that expressed interest in the last two years. The CDHSC also will have online access to the applications prior, prior to the interviews, and will have about a month in January to review the applications. The interviews will start at the end of January and continue through the first half of February, and the interviews are open to the public, and the committee invites members of council to attend some of these and see the, the committee in action. And the full funding recommendations will be presented to council on March 25th. In the last few years, the city's CDBG allocation was significantly decreased, and the downward trend fortunately ended this current fiscal year 2014, with the city's allocation being just under 788,000, which was near-level funding from last year. At this time, staff cannot predict the amount of new entitlement funds the city will be awarded in 2015, and we hope that it will remain level. For human services funding, in the past, council has expressed a desire to increase human service funds by 3% each year to keep up with inflation. However, as a result of the economic challenges, council has been able to just keep it at level funding since 2009. For the past two years, and again for fiscal year 2015, council has appropriated 75,000 in human services funds to pay for the city's share of staffing costs for the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness. This has decreased the amount of human services funds available to grant to 628,256. Due to an improvement in the city's fiscal outlook for fiscal year 2015, staff is recommending a 2% increase to the 628,256 that was previously made available. A 2% bump, which is equivalent to the percent increase budgeted for city staff salaries, would increase the available amount of human services funds to 640,821. And if approved, this funding commitment will be included in the city's fiscal 2015 It's important that council establish distinct established application criteria and funding priorities to be available for use for the applicants as well as for the committee to, to follow. And now council has the opportunity to take any action on the recommendations that I've just discussed, and provide any additional direction to the CDHSC and staff for the next funding cycle. So in summary, we ask council to review and establish the funding priorities- So in summary, we ask council to review and establish the funding priorities and provide guidance to the CDHSC, approve the distribution of grant applications, the applicant criteria, and the application review schedule, and establish a funding commitment of 640,821 from the Fiscal Year 2015 General Fund for the Human Services Program. And that concludes my presentation. And we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I don't see any speaker slips, so it's just to the council. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question, Liz. On our housing, we propose which facilitate housing for low- and moderate-income persons. Is that what, are we trying to do transition housing, or are we just doing retention housing? In other words, are we trying to get people, get them established so that they get on their feet and then move on, take care of themselves, rent, et cetera, or do we look to it more as a program where this is permanent housing for them?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, some of it is for that, but we also have-
Some of it is for what?
For what you have just said, the transitional, the housing. But a lot of CDBG money also gets used for housing rehabilitation, and in the past, that was a significant recipient of CDBG funds on an annual basis. Now it's just a revolving loan fund program, and that's being used to rehabilitate multi-unit housing.
So is that answer, some people move on, but most people stay?
Oh, that's a, that's a, there, sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Right. And if you don't know, we could find out. You can let me know down the line. I'm just wondering what the-
Maybe Sue can answer the question better.
Maybe she could do that.
I'm not sure, maybe I didn't understand the question.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, the CDBG funds are, they're used for a variety of programs. Some of them are for permanent housing or helping to support permanent housing with caseworkers at a permanent housing shelter or permanent housing location. And as Liz mentioned, the majority of our CDBG funds in the past were used for the housing rehab loan program, and that is people who are housed, and it's helping them keep their houses in good shape so that they can remain there for a long time. The program, that program has declined, and we're spending more of our capital monies on facilities improvements, roads, crosswalks, other capital kind of improvements, mostly that come from the Neighborhood Improvement, I'm sorry, Neighborhood Improvement Task Force. So to answer your question, the priority that was up there, that's basically what HUD allows us to use the money for. So as a group, the funding, we don't have a goal to either keep people in housing or do transitional housing. It's kind of a continuum of what we're providing.
Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On page 3, the staff report alludes to the council discussion on using CDBG funds for the East Side traffic, or at least that was the East Side traffic activity was triggered, the discussion about using those CDB capital funds for city-initiated Neighborhood Improvement Task Force projects. And then it says the council chose to postpone the discussion until fiscal year 15. Where do you see that at this point? And, yeah, let's start there.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, I think a few months ago, council received the East Side Neighborhood Transportation Plan, and CDBG was listed as one of the funding sources for that plan. The, I know that the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force is currently preparing what programs they're going to submit for funding requests for this upcoming year, and some of those projects are East Side neighborhood activities. So the plan has been developed, CDBG has been established as one of those funding sources. In terms of setting the money aside, that would be council to discuss. But I know that the Neighborhood Advisory Council recently also reviewed that plan and supported the plan, but was not in support of the idea of limiting the CDBG funds for just those specific projects because they recognized that there was need for other nonprofits to also have infrastructure improvements. I don't know if that helps answer your question.
Well, so at this stage, is council going to have that discussion, or is that, where do you see that at this point in the process of its evolution?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, it is to council at this point, and this would be the discussion, this would be the time to discuss that for the fiscal year 15 allocation process.
Okay, so that is for us to do today?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And staff, I mean, NAC was saying, you know, don't go there with focusing all the money on the East Side transportation activities, and that's staff's recommendation at this point?
Staff is not making a recommendation on that?
Not making a recommendation.
But do you know that the majority of the capital applications that are funded are Neighborhood Improvement Task Force? We leave it to them to prioritize what, and the committee asks them every year, you know, they submit all their applications, and the committee asks them, what is your priority list? You know, if we have enough money, if we don't have enough money? So currently, they are the largest. I'm not sure how much we had for nonprofits for fiscal year 14.
In terms of dollar bounds? About half, I think. More smaller projects were given to nonprofits, but bigger chunks to less projects we're giving to the Neighborhood Improvement. It's to provide access ramps, and they're on the East Side.
As part of that transportation plan?
Yeah.
So transportation plan is in the mix-
Yeah.
But just not pushing everybody else out?
Yes, and actually, the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force has applied, I think this is the fifth year that they're doing access ramps, primarily on the East Side, but they also do some on the West Side. They do a good job of balancing out how many access ramps they need. So that's part of, one of the things that they are actively seeking funding on and have received funding on.
Okay, thank you.
DeRouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's great when you talked about, one of the slides, you're talking about the committee monitoring the grantee performance. And I was just wondering how, what kind of parameters are set up and by whom is it meant? Are they set up by the grantee? Then how do they, how do they measure those? I mean, from year to year? For example, we just talked about cost of changing their model now, so there'll be obviously a new set of measurables, I would assume. So how do they go about doing that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, each year with the application, the applicant sets up their goals and objectives, measurable objectives, other types of objectives, kind of like our P3 program with the city. And then the committee uses that to evaluate their proposals. What are the numbers they're proposing? Do they think it's doable? Once they've recommended their funding, those numbers are put into the contract as an exhibit for each organization, as well as their budget, their operating budget. And the monitoring happens, the human services provide us with quarterly reports, Community Development Block Grant recipients provide monthly reports. So staff looks at those, and they prepare a six-month report and a year-end report for the committee, the Community Development Human Services Committee. So they have those numbers. They have the prior year, year-to-date numbers, and the six-month numbers before they interview the applicants for the following year, so they can see how well they've done, meeting their goals and objectives from the prior year, and they can ask questions based on that. They also receive in the application, and this kind of goes to your question about cost esperanza earlier, they receive the, not only the program budget, but the agency budget for each application, and that includes the prior-year actual numbers. The proposed year and the current year, they're still estimates because the years haven't ended yet, but the prior year, staff goes through and makes sure that those numbers match what's in their audits, so they can say to the committee, these are the actual numbers that comes from, most of them are large enough that they have independent audits. And they also look at the prior year, in the application, they have the objectives, prior year, current year, proposed year, and staff makes sure that the prior-year numbers that are in the application, which the committee is using to make their decisions, are their actual numbers that they've reported. So that's basically it. Staff and the committee go out and do site visits once a year, so they go out and, they don't do a forensic type of audit when they go out, but they go and look to see, you know, what's going on at the location, are services being provided, stuff like that. Mr. House?
I certainly support the recommendations from staff, and I think the Neighborhood Advisory Council got it right on the East Side Traffic Management Program, that they endorsed the plan, and they, but they also recognized how vitally important CDBG funds are for vast, huge variety of important needs that are met by this large number of organizations, and that perhaps there would be some smaller projects that could come through that would be consistent with the plan, but they would compete with the others for the funding. I do think, though, that having accepted that plan, it really puts us in even a better position to achieve larger grant opportunities, the Safe Roots to Schools kind of grants, for which we've managed to get two or three, and then neighborhood of 450,000 apiece for East Side improvements. That kind of thing, we want to go with real gusto to be able to fulfill on this, the plan. But I would recommend, in my motion to approve the staff's recommendation, that we keep the priorities the same as they are now, the status quo.
Second? You're including the 2% increase?
Yes, ma'am, and it was just as staff recommended a moment ago.
Okay.
Excuse me, staff presented a moment ago.
Right.
Yes.
You just said "status quo," so I wanted to make sure it was clear that the funding recommendation was there.
2% increase for 2015.
Great. Did you have comments, Ms. Mario?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
So a 2% increase, is my math correct? Is it $12,500? And coming from the general fund? So I do hope that we hear the next item. I'm not sure if Councilmember Francisco was joking about skipping it, but I found it terribly interesting at the Finance Committee, and I think the public needs to know how well we're doing with some of our tax revenue, especially because I'm supporting bumping this up, this small amount, but which means a lot to our low-income people. I, yeah, I recognize and support that the Neighborhood Advisory Council has prioritized, they also prioritized those East Side capital improvements, so, and many hardcore activist types from the East Side are on that group, so they would know. And then in terms of the deadline, was that like a couple of years ago where the applicants couldn't find a parking place, and they were running in, and so I, and so you, do they only apply online now? So there is no running into the building with a piece of paper?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mario, yes, that is correct. They now submit electronically, so there is no need to find parking, get to the building, have printing issues, they just enter it, and it's saved automatically.
And you provide some technical assistance, I assume, since you've made it online only?
Yeah, yes. When they're submitted, I get notified that there's been an application submitted, and if I have enough time, I always warn them that there's only me, and there's 70 of them, so I try to read as many as possible, and I provide feedback, and it's all done electronically, it's all in a written format that gets sent to them automatically, and they could just log in, fix it, and hit save, and it's done.
Good. Thank you so much for your hard work on this, Ms. Stotts. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm prepared to support the motion, but I would like to, since we are talking about such an essential piece of this funding puzzle, such an essential piece of our restorative program process, maybe a more frequent checkback with cost esperanza in a public forum, you know, to get this new model, get reports on how we're doing, so it's not just on the committee to be responsible for performance, but maybe we could, as a council, look at it as well, so it doesn't go so far in the weeds as they did before in both neighborhood performance and, of course, financial performance. So I don't know if my colleagues would like to say about that, but I would like to see us have some slightly greater oversight in this situation.
I think the Milpus Action Task Force is doing just that, so.
I believe they are, but they're not the ones doing all the money. We are.
What's your suggestion?
I was just asking for a frequent checkback, whether it's a six-month checkback.
I think that's a totally separate, we should have done that at the last agenda item, not this one. This is about future applications, but certainly-
I would just sort of tie it into, there's increase in the, increase in funding that we're about ready to grant.
Right, the increase in funding is not necessarily going just to cost esperanza.
No, that's correct, but there's a good chunk of it is.
I think if cost esperanza knows that we're interested, and they do, that they will keep us updated about what's going on, and I would assume that from them. Mr. Hotchkiss?
I appreciate your comments, Madam Mayor, and also Mr. Rouse's, and at the next MADE meeting, I'll make the suggestion that if for PR purposes and none other, that they come back and voluntarily say, hey, this is how we're doing.
Great. Obviously, I'm going to support the motion. I think the issue also, as I remember, from the East Side safety improvements, without knowing exactly when certain aspects are ready for funding, it's kind of hard to say we're going to allocate all our capital funding all at once next year just for the East Side improvements. There may be phases, and as Mr. House said, there may be other outside sources of grant funding that could work. So it'll be part of the mix, and then also part of the mix, if we choose as a council, when we have our capital conversation, we have one-time money for capital improvements, there's nothing that says that we cannot add some other projects in the East Side area in the list, and we can prioritize it that way, too. So there are other, this isn't the one-stop place for capital improvements on the East Side, although it is one of them. So I think the process you have in place is going to work just fine. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. We have item 14, or we want to just keep on moving on? You want to, okay, let's keep on moving on.
Fiscal year-
Some good news. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Fiscal year 2013, year-end results for the general fund.
Great. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for Councilmember Mario and others that I was suggesting that we could delete the discussion of the details of budget adjustments and just focus on the general trends with the general fund, but that, of course, is up to you.
Okay. Well, I would just suggest that, we've read the staff report, finance has gone over it in detail, if we have questions about the adjustments, we could ask, but we do want to hear the big picture, and so if you could do that, that would be great.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Bob, Mr. Mario, Finance Director. So just a little bit of background, we were here in June, I'm sorry, in August of 2013 to discuss what we call our fourth quarter interim financial statements, and that was really a preliminary report where we gave you the sort of the status of revenues and expenditures for the entire year for all major funds. But we did tell you at that time that with the general fund and other funds as well, but that we would come back later on, and that's today, because we still had to close our books preparing for the audit and the preparation of our financial statements, and that we wanted to give you final, final numbers for the general fund, since that's an important fund. So we're here to do that, and as indicated, we do have some adjustments that we're not going to go over, but happy to answer any questions that you may have on those. So again, we're going to be doing high-level stuff here. This is four of our key tax revenues within the general fund. This is a comparison of budget to actual, and as you can see, and just to the bottom line, right, bottom right corner, about $1 million that we are better than we expected on the budget. So a very good year for us in our tax category, sales taxes, bed taxes, property taxes, all did really well, in particular, our property taxes. So from a budget-to-actual perspective, you know, million to the good, this is not all revenues, just the key tax revenues. But I think what's more important is, what does that mean on an ongoing basis? So for '14 and '15. And as you can imagine, middle of the year, January, February, as we prepared this current year budget, we've made some projections about where we would be irrespective of where the budget was. And so this next slide shows you what we projected somewhere around February, what these revenues would do by the end of the year, and those were the numbers we used to develop our 2014 estimates. So you can see the number at the bottom right corner is much smaller, or about half of what it was, on a comparison to budget basis. So still good news, so we did about a half-million dollars better in this category of revenues than we projected and therefore built our budget for 2014 and '15. So we really are ahead of the game in '14, this year, for about half-million dollars at least in this category. Looking at all the departments now on a final basis of expenditures for the year, you could see that we are all under budget except for one at the bottom right, the Parks and Recreation Department, is slightly over by about $6,400. One of the adjustments that's in the attachment is to increase appropriations to make up for that shortfall or that overage, but it is fully covered from revenues above budget. But you can see at the bottom right corner, $1.9 million is a very large variance, higher than I've seen in a while. We typically see 1 million to 1.5 million, and in fact, you're all familiar with the anticipated year-end variance that we budget and include into the budget process. That is supposed to be what we expect, our expenditures to be coming under budget, so you can see we've done better than that even, you know, for the year. So combining the revenues and expenditures, what I would focus on is first, the bottom right number, you can see that revenues over budget, expenditures under budget, we are about $2.1 million better. about $2.1 million better than we, you know, in relation to budgets. So that's a good year. If you want to look at the, I think what's more important now, that at the end of the year, this is, these are the actual numbers. Budget is a plan, actuals are real. So our revenues exceeded our expenditures by over $3.2 million, almost $3.3 million. That's the bottom line, if you will, the net profit at the end of the year. That's all our surplus. And as you know, our new policy says that half of that surplus will go to our capital outlay fund, that will fund projects that we program in '15 to add with the ongoing amount that we budget each year. So we're going to be adding 1.6 million to that, and the balance of that, the other 1.6 will fall to the reserve balances. That will really help the bottom line of our reserves in the general fund.
And if I could, none of this is one-time boost? This is just accumulated from typical revenue sources?
Yeah, this is all ongoing stuff.
Great.
What I, and this is, might be a little more confusing than, there's value there, but what I did is, because I mentioned the anticipated year-end variance, we budget that as a revenue item, even though we know it's not a revenue, it's going to be really savings we expect on the expenditure side. So I just sort of adjusted to where it should be on the budget side, just to give you a real good sense of how we did in terms of budget to actual, that the real gains were in the revenue side, not on the expenditure side. We had $1.7 million of favorable variance on the revenue side and about $421,000 on the expenditure side, above what we kind of expected. So our reserves, so, you know, all these revenues and expenditures fall into our reserve balances in the general fund. The first column of numbers represents what we are supposed to have in the bank in reserves. We're supposed to have $27.7 million. It's a big number. In the total, it's about, it is 25% of our operating budget, and that number grows every year, as you know. So for every million dollars of growth, we have to add 25, or 250,000 to our reserve requirements. So the actual number to the right of that, $25 million, actually, we've made some gains in that, because we used to be further apart from what we're supposed to have. We're down to $2.7 million, even given the fact that we've been chasing a growing number. So we're adding money to our reserves, and we're closing the gap, even though the reserve requirements are growing every year as our budget grows. So I think this is good news. Gives you, this gives you a multi-year perspective of where we've been on our reserves relative to the policy. The policy is a red line at the top. You'll see that it's kind of dropped a few years ago as our budget was reduced during the recession. It's starting to climb back up, but our reserves are certainly doing much better than we were four or five years ago. We're really closing that gap in relation to where we were in 2008, for example. And this is adjusted, by the way, for the transfer of the $1.6 million surplus into our capital outlay fund. So just real quick, want to mention two adjustments that we are proposing. One is to transfer some one-time money that we received near the end of the fiscal year into the capital outlay fund. This will be made, this will be then, or bring that total of one-time money to 4.3 million that we'll be considering with council in about a month. We're waiting to hear from the Department of Finance on the bond proceeds question with our, on the RDA, but once we get that final decision, which we hope is favorable, then we'll be back to council with discussion of how we spend the 4.3 million in one-time funds. And then we're again asking to transfer that year-end surplus or half of that to the capital outlay fund. Again, that will be programmed in 2015. That will not be part of the discussion we have with the one-time money. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Are you going to be coming back and making recommendations on the dispersal or use of those one-time funds?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I think we'll be bringing some broad recommendations. We have some projects we've identified. Again, that'll really be severely impacted by whether we get approval from the Department of Finance or not. But yeah, we'll be coming with some recommendations.
When do we expect to hear that? Do we know?
It could be anytime. We're hoping in the next couple of weeks.
Great, thanks.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you. So when we start to talk about that one-time money and say we identify a whole bunch of things that we want to fund, and that 4.3 million isn't enough, could we take a little from the 3.2 million surplus that we have this, you know, right now? I mean, I know that we decided 50% capital, 50% infrastructure, but we could decide, right, just the seven of us that we want to dip into there, if there's something we wanted to pay for?
That is correct, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mario, four of you could decide that.
Oh, right on. Thank you. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Mr. Samario, is it unusual or wise to use one-time money to refill the reserves? I mean, is that a decision that can be made?
I'm sorry, you asked that question again.
Signing one-time money to replenish the capital or the contingency reserves that were deficit, is that a, is that in the menu of possibilities?
What we're doing.
Yeah, that's, that's, by definition, you know, it's one-time money that goes into the reserves, and we'd use those reserves for one-time purposes.
Yeah, the extra 4.3, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That will be a discussion for another day, but that is the policy we have now, is half going back to reserves and half for capital.
No, I get that.
Yeah, okay. Well, great news, and it again shows the full city coming together at all levels to make sure we keep our expenses in line and doing what we can to increase revenues when we can. So, yes, Mr. Samario?
Yeah, I just, I put a note to myself, very big, so I didn't forget, and I almost forgot. So as you may know, every year we come to council around December to present to you our comprehensive annual financial report, we call our CAFER, and that really is just sort of, shows you historically what happened for all funds, you know, in a very formal way. But you also know that we're in the middle of replacing our financial management system. That has been, it's an 18-month program or project that we are in year, or month ten of. We're expecting to go live in January with most of those modules. Unfortunately, the impact of that project has taken a toll on our, on a lot of our staff in IS and accounting, so we are going to delay the CAFER until January when we present it to council. Whether that just means that we may not get the, we likely won't get a GFOA award or certificate that says we, you know, we met certain requirements and filed it on a certain time period. But in the, in the context of getting our new FMS onboard and up running in January, we think that's a better priority. So just wanted to give you a heads up about that.
A heads up. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Okay, we do need a motion to approve the proposed adjustments.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Move on to council member committee assignment reports. Ms. Mario?
Thank you. I attended the youth council meeting last night, and the, our youth leaders are considering various community service projects, and they're continuing to work on their committee work in fundraising, special events, and combating youth violence. The pro-youth movement had a discussion about the gang injunction this weekend, and it was very balanced, with no anger, just looking for questions and answers on the legal matters. And I'm really pleased and proud of the discussion and the discourse, the respectful discourse. And I was a panelist on the Coalition Against Gun Violence. How do we make our schools, community, and homes safer? And the mayor moderated that, and we had a really nice discussion from different angles, domestic violence, mishaps, and tragedies in the schools, and personal safety. And then I attended the Gang Task Force, the South Coast Task Force on Youth Gangs, had its quarterly meeting last Wednesday, and the main presentation was on programming for girls. And so Casa de la Raza has a program, the Community Action Commission does. So sometimes the females get lost in the question about gangs and street violence, and so that was a really good presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got to be one of the judges in the art competition called Dream Above the Influence, put on by the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse and Fighting Back Coalition. And on Saturday, we had an award ceremony hosted by the mayor herself, and we awarded prizes to these different students, grades kindergarten through five, that won these awards for artwork, and it was very impressive, very full house at the mural room at the courthouse.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Mr. Hotchkiss and I went to the Unity Shop Open House on, that was on Thursday, is that, yeah, the 17th of October, and got to see the, many of the, looked very familiar to all of us who had toured the previous facility, and many of the neat pieces had been moved over and maybe even made better at the new Unity Shop address, so that's coming along nicely.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Just to add to what Mr. White said, I mean, it's really a remarkable complex. It looks like Gelson's or something when you go in there. All the cans are turned just this way and that, and people shop for what they need. Interestingly, the data they've got says that families only come there six point, I think, two, three times, and then they're independent and on their own. So it's not a ongoing program, it's something to help people get back on their feet, and there's a lot of things there. Secondly, you and I, and actually just about the whole world, went to the 75th Riviera Association Celebration at Marymount School, which was a really wonderful affair, and congratulations to them, and what's a really burgeoning neighborhood association.
I also want to commend the New Noise Music Festival. They had a lot of events going on Thursday through Saturday, including a very robust street fair down in the Funk Zone, which was at the same day as the Funk Zone Arts Festival. It was a hopping place down there last weekend, and I was on a panel discussion with some local artists at Michael Cate, which is really a great way to bring in a business, you know, a furniture company with art. The art there is a little dramatic for my taste, but it was fun to look at in a store. I don't know if I wanted in my living room, but I really appreciated meeting the artists, but it keeps turning around, which is really, really fantastic. And to focus on local artists as well is, was always fun to do down in the Funk Zone. So that was over the weekend. And with that, I think that's it. We have a couple of closed sessions to read.
Item number 15, conference with labor negotiator, and item number 16, conference with legal counsel pending potential litigation.
Thank you, and we'll be adjourning from there. Thank you very much.